So we have meeting minutes to approve for three separate meetings, come back to November 9.
I don't have any packet at all. All I have is an agenda, just so you know. That's all I got.
Well, that was sent out to your regular email as well as the select board email.
Let me look at my.
Yeah, you're on the email, Terry.
Let me see if I can find it on my regular email.
Okay, it should be a PDF with the agenda as one and the packet.
My regular email, I doesn't, I can't look at it anyways because of the way it saved. But I do not see it in my select board email. All I have, well, wait, maybe it's just. It says plus one, but I don't see the plus one. All I see is the agenda. Weird.
All right, so we can probably go ahead and try to approve the minutes anyway if there's a majority. Is that okay?
Yeah, I have no problem with it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll start with November 9th meeting. Is there a motion to approve those meeting minutes?
It's all moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. November 9th meeting minutes approved. The next meeting minutes are December 14th, our regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve December 14th regular meeting minutes.
Okay, there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And the last is the review of December 21st special meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
It's all moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes approved. Okay, there is no open public comment. Nobody else joined since we've been on?
There is nobody else.
So we'll go to our guests, Wayne Elliott and Jeff Lewis on the Willow Street Pump Station Project Update.
Greg, did you want to start with anything here at all or have us jump into it?
Well, just a quick introduction. I'm not sure how many people know Wayne Elliott and Jeff Lewis. They're with Aldridge and Elliott. It's an engineering firm that we've used quite often. They're currently working on the sewer rehabilitation down on Willow Street. The pump station collection area that has some significant infiltration coming into the system. They've been working diligently on all phases of this project and I believe we're at the step two, which is almost final design. Am I correct?
We're well into final design, Greg.
Right, right. So Wayne and Jeff, the floor is yours.
Okay, yeah, good evening. So we met, we met last week with Greg in the state to do a brief update on the project and kind of talked about the timing here and thought it was a good opportunity to get in front of the select board and give you guys a quick update. We put the two or three page memo together, tried to be, we do have the drawings and some other details we'd be glad to share at some point if you'd like to see that. But I thought it would be good for you to just give you guys a quick update on the status where we're at. And ultimately, you know, the big question here for timing to have you think about is, you know, what your plans are for a bond, bond vote. You know, if you're still, and this is more driven by, you know, when you guys are thinking about town meeting and when you kind of figure out that date and timing, you know, do you want to put this on that particular town meeting date as an article for a, for a bond vote? So that's kind of just to get you thinking a little bit about that here for the next steps. I'm gonna, I've got Jeff Lewis from my office and if that's okay, I'm gonna have Jeff kind of walk through the memo here with you and feel free to kind of jump in as we go here if you guys have any questions as we go through this.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
As Wayne said, I'm Jeff. I don't know if everybody has a copy of the memo, but I just kind of wanted to summarize quickly what we've done so far in the project. Kind of working through what's those bold, bold text sections that are there. As, as it states, we've, we've completed a couple of field surveys on site. We've actually been out there a total of three times on completing field surveys and also doing some soil borings in the area. So that was, that was for base mapping and to make sure that we understood the existing conditions in the area. We started pulling together contract specifications for the project. These will use like the standard DJ CDC documents, which is required by the funding agency and is a, is a really tried and true contract document set that we're planning on using for this, for this project. As Wayne mentioned, we've, we've started pulling together drawings for the project. We have, we've pulled together a lot of the, the overall ideas. Now we're just kind of parsing through the fine details to make sure that we get, get through and have everything covered when we get to, get, get to bidding time. As the last page of the document, you have that of the select board memo that we sent out, there's a overall site map that kind of shows the overall project scope and kind of gives a good idea of what we're looking at at this point. At this time, basically, the, the proposed project remains very consistent with what we discussed with the select board during our, during our preliminary engineering study. And we're, we're basically just planning on addressing those high end immediate needs as, as discussed at that time. I feel like I'm flying through, flying through this note. Does anybody have any questions or anything? I know that basically just, just touching on what we've done so far. There will be some temporary construction easements required for the project and we will continue to coordinate with you guys to make sure that we get those, get those pulled together along with potentially some new permanent easements as we're replacing infrastructure that was installed on, in the early 19, 1918 or so. So we might need some, some new easements there in those, in those areas. The project's initial cost estimate was $1,090,000 and that has pretty much remained at the same level. We haven't really run into anything that would, that would cause us to change that one way or the other. This, this goes hand in hand with the total project cost estimate of $1.475 million. And this, this will be updated as we finalize our final design here and get, get you guys a set of 90% contract documents. We discussed with Greg a little bit more of the details here, but one of the major drivers of cost that's kind of out of control is, is doing an under, underground boring of, of a new sewer under the railroad in this area. And that has to be done by a select, a select contractor and that, that pricing is just kind of unknown at this time, but we'll be kind of nailed in a little bit further hopefully as we get to the 90%. But that kind of explains the, one of the, one of the higher price tags on this project.
Your memo states they're unwilling to give us an estimate.
So we talked to them about giving us an estimate and they offered to do so if we paid them basically to look at it. They, they said they would potentially look at it and possibly provide us a cost estimate if, if we paid for their services to do so. Wayne, I don't know if you want to weigh in more here.
Yeah, oh, well, yeah, Tom, that's in, and that's not something we're opposed to. We didn't really probably have it quite far enough here up until the last two or three weeks where we wanted to get them back involved in. So, so our plan is to reach back out to them soon here. And we don't have an issue with paying them, you know, out of our budget and our fee to, to do that, if that makes sense and it works. And they're willing to try to hopefully tighten up the numbers a little better, Tom. So does that answer your question or?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So we're planning on using a clean water SRF funding for this project. It's a, it's a state-run program that has some great benefits for the town. As you guys have currently been using this project, some of the, some of the major selling points for this is that the step one and step two engineering fees have a 50% subsidy that come with them. And through, through, at least the beginning of next year, we're anticipating that they're going to continue to have the 40% subsidy of construction costs. So overall, you have some significant savings on this project and subsidize, subsidized loan from, from the state. There's some requirements, as I mentioned, like the bid documents and there's, there's other specific things that we got to keep checking boxes for to keep you guys on track with that. And part of that is you guys holding a bond vote for the project. So that, as Wayne indicated, we, we wanted to kind of nail down with you guys when you were looking to hold that bond vote. Other things that need to be done, there's to keep this project on the priority list, which, which we're, we're gonna stay on top of for you guys work with Greg to make sure the project stays in the state's good graces. And we provided basically a funding summary that kind of breaks down the project and what we anticipate, everything looking like in table one. But overall, we're anticipating of, of the $1.47 million contract, we're looking at $875,960 being actual loan after subsidies. This is kind of our current projection for, for this project. That reads clearer in table form, but. So moving forward, we're going to continue, continue our design on our end. And we just wanted to, to kind of coordinate with you and figure out exactly what dates we're choosing for, just based on your, on your bond vote date. And obviously answering any other questions you guys have about the project and second with you guys and see how it is doing.
Yeah, I'll just jump in quickly about the funding. So one of the big drivers here, you know, as of July 1st, the state is putting up this 40% construction contingency. It is first come, first served. The state's comfortable. It's going to be there, you know, here regardless of when you decide to do a bond vote. We do not know at this point if that's going to be carried forward into the next fiscal year. So that's why the timing became a little bit, you know, somewhat critical here with the decisions to kind of move this forward sooner than later.
Thank you.
Wayne, are you comfortable that if we were to get to vote, say in May, that we would still be okay with, with all the timelines?
Yeah, probably Greg. And, and I can't say 100%, but probably close to that. I've gotten, we've asked that question on quite a few of our projects and on the clean water SRF side, they're comfortable that there's plenty of money there. And part of the reason for that is it's limited to the small communities under a population of 10,000. So for example, Rutland, Burlington, South Burlington, if you know any of these bigger communities, Brattleboro, you know, have bigger projects. They're not actually even able to tap into that. So that's one of the reasons why the pot of money's, you know, anticipated to be there, even though it's first come, first served. The drinking water is a whole different situation. That one's first come, first served and that one's probably wouldn't. But again, that doesn't affect you here as it does on the clean water SRF side.
So we haven't really talked about our meeting, our town meeting.
Yep.
And the Australian ballot and all that. We discussed it, but we haven't really finalized that. Correct? So if it were, if we were to vote on a bond, chances are it would have to be by Australian ballot and not by town meeting.
As it sits right now, yes, we've been given the availability or the, the ability to do everything by Australian ballot, Australian ballot and hold the, the town meeting electronically. There is currently a, a bill in the legislature that would allow for select boards to move out town meeting to a date that they feel is a little bit more reasonable and safer and, and other things. If that were to pass, which the people that I've talked to are fairly confident that it will pass, maybe by the middle of the month or so, that would allow us to possibly move out to a, a date where we might be able to do more of a typical town meeting where there's in-person voting and things like that. But right now, we're assuming this is all going to be Australian ballot with, with 100% electronic town meeting.
From my understanding, there, it's not allowed. You can't have a floor meeting electronically or remotely.
Right. Right, so town meeting would be an informational meeting.
Right.
Changing. Yes. Which is why I would prefer not to do it, but it is what it is at this point.
And they've got to decide sooner rather than later because of all the deadlines for warning it and getting out the information and how we're doing this. So.
Yeah, from what I've, what I understand is that it's very high priority and that as soon as they reconvene, it will be something that they're going to work on. Like I said, the people that I've talked to and take it for what it's worth have said they're fairly confident that it's going to happen. And that's, but we're going to move forward as if it's not. I think we kind of have to until we know otherwise. And then we need to have that discussion if that's something that the select board is, is interested in pursuing, moving it out to maybe May or if they want to go forward with, with sort of the status quo.
Yeah, I'm just concerned though, I'd rather, I mean, me personally, have it on the ballot just because I hate to lose funding. That, you know, especially when you have first come, first served, it could be matched up pretty quickly. And I'd hate to lose that, you know, availability of having some funding from, from them. So I think that's something we definitely have to talk about as a select board, I mean.
Yeah, that's why the timing of this was kind of critical, Judy, because, you know, if you guys choose to keep everything for the normal town meeting date in early March, then, you know, there's things that need to start happening, you know, coordinating with bond council and those kind of things. Where if, if you choose to postpone that, you've got a little more flexibility and time here.
Okay.
And unfortunately, we're sort of waiting for that, that the authority to tell us what, if we even have that option. And maybe we need to have a discussion at the next meeting if, and just assume that it may or may not happen, what we want to do.
Does anybody else have any questions on the report or anything that was discussed? No?
No. Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be tight, but we've got to wait for the legislature to.
Well, we don't really have to wait for them. We can go ahead and just do everything by Australian ballot. We don't have to wait for them to decide if we're going to push a meeting out. We could just hold a meeting and, you know.
Yeah, it's gonna be hard to explain to people.
But well, you know, Wayne, once we get that nailed down, I'll definitely let you know how we've decided.
Yeah, Greg, my only caution too about, you know, with us going too far out in the May with a vote is, you know, we could put this out to bid before the bond vote, but you know, you start pushing it late into the spring and, you know, it's, it's hard to know, especially in the Rowland County area. Then, you know, the construction pricing starts to creep up, gets a little more unpredictable. So want to be a little careful about pushing it too, too far into the spring.
Right.
I don't.
Go ahead, Ben.
I think the other plus of, of town meeting day being at the normal time, and even though it would be on an Australian ballot, is it would give us time to do a second vote if it did get defeated. So just, just a thought there.
And I'm, I'm in agreement with keeping town meeting day, even though it would be a lot. And maybe having questions put in ahead of time would be helpful for people. But I don't think that we should wait till May because we do not know the outcome of COVID by May. And, and I see things continuing to be pushed because, oh, maybe at this time it's going to be better. And maybe at this time it's going to be better. And those, those things are still being pushed out. So I just, I feel that we should not wait until May.
So I'll, I'll put this on the agenda for discussion at our next meeting so that we can nail this down a little bit and then I can pass this information on to Wayne.
I mean, the town is still going to get the same information. We'll have to have an information meeting so they'll know all about the bond, they'll know what it's for, they'll know all the details to it. They just won't vote from the floor. They'll just vote the next day. So I think it still accomplishes exactly what we need to do.
Yeah, and we've done a few of these like this and it's actually worked out well. Typically, what we'll do for the public hearing is just put a PowerPoint presentation together, you know, and you guys would switch over to control. And that's actually worked, worked pretty well.
Okay. Lisa, do you have a question or a comment?
No, but just a comment. I mean, for the informational piece, you can always contact PIG TV and put it up earlier there, just like school boards do. So we will run on a loop and the information is out, maybe even before you have a meeting if Wayne has a PowerPoint put together. I mean, my guess is just like any other informational bond meeting, generally it's the engineering firm that's doing most of the discussion.
That's a good point. Okay. All right. So I think the next meeting, we definitely have to nail this down, don't you, everybody?
I'll put that on the agenda.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Wayne and Jeff.
Great, great. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks guys. Have a good night.
All right. All right, on to good stuff. Maybe have some good stuff to share?
2020 is almost over.
That is a good thing.
As long as 2021 is better, then we're outside, so.
Can't be much worse.
All right. Hey, highway department.
So everything is moving forward. You saw that we had a pretty significant snowstorm. I think everything went pretty well. I didn't get a lot of complaint. We got one or two things that, that sort of happened that were minor, but nothing major. I, I think the, the two new guys did a pretty good job. It was sort of a baptism by fire, I think. But everything's going well over there, sort of just running on the, the snow thing now, waiting for storm after storm after storm. We will be, so we will be providing department reports moving forward. I just, with me being gone and the holidays and all that, it just didn't happen. But it's going to be a consistent thing where you're going to see highway reports and, and watered sewer reports once a month. So those will be forthcoming.
Starting when? Because it's been like a while since we've had one because of all.
Been like a month, yeah.
Yeah, so like, do you think next meeting or the, the last meeting of the month, what are you, what are your thoughts on?
Next meeting is fine. I think everybody's acclimated enough that they can start moving forward with all this. I'm going to have, you know, John and I will be working on putting all these reports together. So it's kind of a new thing for him. But yeah, I, yeah, I mean, they're, they're kind of a month behind anyway. So we can get them all at the next meeting and sort of, and just basically do them a month at a time from there. So other than that, you know, like I said, we, we had the storms, we had the flooding issue. I went down and hiked the trail today to look for the car and I don't see it, but the water is so high that it may still be there. I don't know. It would have to really be attached to that rock if it was still there because that water was, was moving. So there's probably a very high possibility that that thing is at the bottom now and then we, you know, a little easier to access at that point. So so other than that, as far as highway, like I said, it's sort of what's been going on. We made it through the storms. The only flooding we saw was at Gorm Bridge and it was on the other side. We put up some signs for a few days. Those signs, I believe, are going to go down in the morning and everything's sort of back to normal there. And did anybody hear anything, any complaints, any concerns, anything out in the, in the, the public realm that, that we can address? Because we didn't hear a whole lot, just a sort of normal, normal type things that we heard.
I didn't hear anything.
I didn't hear any complaints.
Good, go ahead.
Okay, is that it for highway?
That's it.
Is there a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners?
Don't move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Again, we'll get the report to you, but one significant thing that I need to report is we had a, oh, a few weeks ago, two weeks ago, we had the pump at the wellhouse has gone down again. So there's a, there's a, a pump and a motor and then there's a controller that's inside the building that are all part of the operation out there. And there was a short somewhere within the well casing, shorting out the motor. We had to pull the entire thing, check it out, get a new motor put in. The pump is still there. The pump is running fine, but the, the motor had to be replaced and the controller had to be replaced because it was shorting out. All tail so far, we're looking at about $22,000. So you're gonna, you're going to see within the the first, the first bills you see, there's some, what, Parker Pump, Patch Electric, some of those expenses, that's what those large expenses are for. But that was, you know, was an emergency situation, something that had to happen. We went on the backup mill for about a week, week and a half. Got the new parts and pieces put together and we're back up running normal like we should be.
Is this the, Greg, is this the new pump that was replaced a year ago?
It, it's, it's, yes, but the pump is okay. The motor and everything is not. So my understanding from John and, and Simon's at the time was that the, the pump is new, but everything else was, was not replaced at the time whenever it went, when it had issues last time. I have Phil and Charlotte as well coming in. So the pump itself is still the original pump or the one that was replaced and it's still okay. It was just a controlling mechanism and the motor itself that controls it that have to be replaced. So there's something going on there that's bigger than just this, I think. If there's a short, there's an electrical issue somewhere. Patch Electric's been out there. We've had another electrician take a look, trying to figure out what's going on. It's shorting out somewhere in the casing. Hopefully by replacing the, everything that's in there besides the pump, it'll stop the situation moving forward, we hope. But, but that's a, a big expense that we were not ready for. There is money in the, you know, in the account, so we're okay there. But, you know, it's just one of those things, I guess. My understanding was that that whole thing is only what, five or seven years old anyway? The new well is not real old anyway. And so, you know, these items shouldn't be failing as quickly as they are. So we're going to have to really monitor what's going on over there and, and, and hope that we found the issue. There's, there's definitely an underlying issue. I mean, that's, that's obvious. So, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention because you, you are going to do that within the budget discussion we have tonight. And also it's, it's in the warrants that those large expenses are in there.
So does he have any ideas at all if it's not the parts, like what's causing these?
Like, again, they think that there's a shorting issue. So what we had to change out was the motor and then the controller, which is a variable pump controller. And what it does is it, it's three phase, so it sort of allows it to ramp up and run at half speed or whatever it needs to do. And that went bad as well as the motor itself. So we don't know. The issue could either be in the controller itself. It could be in the, the cable that's shorting out on the way down. It could be on the motor. They've checked them all out. They diagnosed everything, didn't find anything other than there was an issue and it had, had ruined the parts, basically. You know, I don't know. I wish there was an answer. Judy, I wish I could say, yeah, it was this and they found it, but they didn't. They diagnosed everything. They found that there were some bad parts and pieces. We replaced those parts and pieces and everything's up and running again. We hope that it doesn't happen again.
But the most, the majority of parts are so new that you kind of.
Right, exactly. And these parts should last, you know, years, 10, 15 years. And they went out in whatever it was, five or seven years. So we're going to closely monitor what's going on. There's only so much we can do, but we are going to definitely watch. You know, power outages and things like that could be part of this, but that's part of that variable, that variable controller we have is supposed to help out with that. So I don't know. It's just, I don't know. I don't know. But unfortunately, it happened and it's, it's a pretty decent expense that we, we had to do because we couldn't run on the backup forever. But we are back and running normal right now. Yeah, we also had a water main break over the weekend down on Patch Street. Went really well, was about nine foot deep. New guy stepped up, did a great job. Everybody stepped up and did a great job. Unfortunately, we had to put everybody on boil water for about a week because the, I called three labs and they were all shut down. This was on a Thursday afternoon, Wednesday afternoon, actually. And all the labs were shut down for the long weekend and they couldn't come back up until Monday. So I hand-delivered all the boil water notices to people and for the most part, they were okay. They understood. And, but, but the fix was done. Fix was done the same day. The water was taken this morning and we'll take another sample tomorrow. And then if everything comes back good, they'll be off of boil water come Wednesday.
Was that a joint or a pipe fracture?
It was a fracture in a pipe. Yeah, yeah, it was just, you know, with the, the frosting and, and the heaving and then it just, it is what it is. Old pipe and it was a small fix. It was just nine foot deep. That was the real problem and it was really wet. They had a hard time shutting people off. We tried not to shut the water off because we didn't want to have people out of water and have to do boil water, but it just, it just couldn't happen. We, ultimately, John had to shut the water off. If we, if we maintain pressure, positive pressure in the pipes, we don't have to do a boil water notice. And that was what we were shooting for, but it just didn't happen. But but the good thing is, is that everybody stepped up and I, I think the, the, the new guys are really doing a really good job and they're learning and they're willing to learn and they're, they're doing good. So there is a plus out of this, I guess. Other than that, everything else is going well and in the water department, the rounds are being done in-house. Now we're doing everything in-house. The new employees are learning the rounds and, and everything seems to be on track.
Does anybody have any questions, Tom?
The, the water department truck isn't being used by the water department anymore.
Yeah, so the, yes, John has now taken the water department truck. The, what's that?
Why is that?
Currently, he's doing the rounds on the weekend. Go ahead.
That truck is specifically purchased and set up for them. It's a five passenger vehicle.
Yeah, right. So he's the water, well, he's basically in charge of the water department now. He's the ORC for the water and sewer department. So he's doing the rounds on a daily basis until the guys get to where they're comfortable doing it themselves. And that truck that he was driving for the highway department was the, I guess it was an old, old, old truck. That is now sitting at the shop as a work truck and ready to go for plowing. And the water truck is being used on a daily basis by the ORC of the system. I don't know. I mean, that was whenever Simon's was doing it, I think. I can't remember his name. But the young kid was driving that truck. He would get to the shop and he would drive that around to do the rounds and, and do what he did as well, as well. If we want to go back to the other one, that's, that's up to you. That's fine. That truck that, like I said, that truck that, that John was driving was, was a fairly old truck. That John was driving was, was a fairly old truck. Um, we kind of wanted to keep it at the shop just so that it was there. To do plowing whenever we needed to plow. Um, but that's why it's being driven. That's why that truck's being driven because John is the ORC. Or the guy in charge of the, of the water sewer system and he's the one that's monitoring the system on a daily basis.
So what about when the other guys start working in on it? Wouldn't they just leave it at the shop? So anybody had access to that truck for that purpose?
Uh, that's most likely what'll happen. Yeah, as I believe we only have the one water truck, right? And I think there's just one, so. Uh, we'll have to work through that when we get there. That most likely will be the, the most logical thing to do. Is just have that be their, you know, whoever's on call's truck or whatever. Uh, we're also gonna start rotating the on-call, so somebody. Will be on call when they get, when they get ready. Um, somebody will be sort of on call all week so that when there's a call out, they'll, they'll have to come in and do what they do.
Let me ask you one thing. Um, as far as John, John was, um, pretty much the on-call person all the time because he was salaried. So we weren't paying a lot of overtime. So if we did get, um, a snowstorm, he jumped in truck that he had previously. And lost some places. So now he's not gonna have that access. So how's that, how's that working out?
Well, when he, when we have a snow day, we've got two other employees that are gonna jump in those trucks and go plowing as well. And he's gonna do the water and sewer or whatever. I mean, it's gonna work its way out once we get everybody trained up. If you've got some.
We agreed on when we, when, when his whole position is, he, he took on that role for the highway, so he wouldn't have overtime and. Cost the town. And now we've got two new guys that we're gonna put out there and get overtime. I just kind of questioning.
John to do the rounds three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Is that, is that the plan?
No, I'm just saying, I just kind of wanted some answers as to how, well, how the, the whole transition took place and what he agreed upon. To save the town money is now seems to be kind of null and void. And I'm just questioning when that happened and who.
Well, we.
Decided.
Okay, uh, we, we have four, we were gonna have four people, including myself. We have the two guys, we have John, we have myself. And the idea was to do during the week, we, somebody does the rounds or somebody here to work, they do the rounds like they normally would do. Uh, once we get our operator person and somebody's gonna shake out as being sort of the, the main operator. Cause we already had an operator that was one, was funded one hundred percent and then we had a backup operator type person that was funded fifty percent. So. Um, eventually there's going to be an operator type person and they're gonna be doing the rounds between them and John. They'll be doing the rounds during the week. On the weekend, the idea was to have somebody rotating to do the rounds so that the same person isn't doing it every single day of the year. Uh, we are, we come in and we run, do rounds. They come in, they check the system every single day of the week. So. Every, every fourth week, the same person, that person will be doing the rounds. So is, is that, was that not there? So if you look at. In the proposal that I submitted, there was six thousand dollars allotted for overtime and that was to do the rounds by somebody on the weekends. For the most part, and then you have water breaks and things like that. Uh, John is on salary, so John is, is not getting any sort of overtime whatsoever. No matter how many hours he's working, of course. But there was never an intent to have the same operator doing the rounds every single day of the year. There was an idea that you were gonna, we were gonna rotate that so that not, somebody didn't have to be at home every weekend and be on call. The idea of having somebody doing the, the rounds and being on call is that we do that on a weekly basis. So this week it may be. John and he's on call Monday through Sunday. And if something happens, we get an alarm, he's the one who has to go out and check it. Yes, and then the next week, somebody else is doing it. So the same person's not stuck in town and, and required to be here. Every day of the year. And there was an allotment, there was budgeted money in there for overtime to allow for that. In the proposal that I submitted.
Yeah, I saw that.
If that's not what you guys thought you agreed to and I don't want that, we can definitely have a discussion, but. I, I'm not gonna have John on call three hundred and sixty-five days a year. You know, during this, the winter season, when we snowplow snow, that's something we don't really know, you know, things happen. But i- the intent was to sort of divvy this out a little bit so that it was, so that we had coverage every day of the year, but it wasn't the same person doing it.
You will be one of the ones on call?
I don't know that I'll necessarily be on call, but I'll be doing the rounds. So every fourth week or so, the idea was that I would be doing, I'll go out and I'll do the two, three hours, whatever it takes to, to check the water system and the sewer system. Every fourth week. And then somebody else.
How are you gonna have time to be the town manager?
That's Sunday, that's Saturday and Sunday. That's so I'm not paying somebody else four hours to come in and do of overtime or whatever to do the rounds.
Did Simons do the rounds on weekends?
Yeah, or they shut the system down and screwed up the system. They raised their turbidity because they shut the system down every Saturday. So w- we do it every single day. Uh, we're, you know, they wanna make sure that we've got, you know, the chlorine hasn't gone bad or, or has quit working or whatever. Uh, that turbidity hasn't spiked. This is, this, it's, it's usually about two hours. Um, per, so three to four hours to do the whole thing. It's not a big deal. But the thought was, is that John would do it one weekend, I would do it one weekend and the two guys would do it one weekend. And so we would, every fourth weekend, somebody would be doing. Two of those weekends is you're not paying anybody because I'm on salary and John's on salary. The other two, there's, there's a couple hours of overtime. But during the week, that same person will ha- has the cell phone and so if there's an issue or an error, they'll get the call. And then when they get the call, if they can't figure it out, they call John and then he goes and does it. When he's on call, he gets the initial call. So that'll be split between the three of them. I'm not necessarily gonna be on call because they have the, the water sewer, you know, they've got all the tools and all that stuff to do that job. But I'll help with the rounds. Does that make sense? You guys are looking at me like it doesn't make any sense.
I, I just don't think we expected you to be quite so involved.
Well, I mean, it's really just doing them a favor. I, I mean, it's Saturday, Sunday, I'm, and I'm just trying to help them out. I take the burden off them every fourth week. That was it. Going in and doing the rounds doesn't take, but i- it's not that difficult to do. You're going in, you're checking chlorine residuals, you're checking. Checking tank levels, just simple stuff like that. Just going about and really just putting your eyeballs on stuff is what it's really about. And that's only, that's only Saturdays and Sundays every fourth week.
So here's, here's another question. If these two people are hired to do this and they're doing this two weeks out of the month, why are we paying them overtime? Why aren't we just giving them a day off and they're just working six days and getting forty hours? Cause I'd just rather keep the overtime for snow events and for sidewalk clearing and.
Well, the overtime that you're paying is coming out of the water and sewer department. So it's budgeted at, at. Um, it was budgeted at, uh, one employee is being paid one hundred percent out of water sewer. So his overtime regardless of even if he's, i- is gonna be water sewer unless he's plowing snow. But it's, it's all there. It's all the same. It's two pools of money that equal the same amount. Does that make sense?
But still, I don't understand why we're paying them overtime four hours on Saturday and four hours on Sunday. Instead of just making that eight hours and they just work a six day week at forty hours.
Because we wouldn't retain them. We can. I can do that to them and tell them you're working two hours short every day. And, and you're not getting anything for coming on the weekends. But we, we kind of wanna keep these guys and I don't know that that would do it.
So how soon are they gonna become operators? When are they gonna be, cause they're not certified now correctly and they're gonna get certified?
No, but they're, they're, they can do the rounds. So under any, under Vermont rules, um. The ORC, which is John, who has all the licenses that meet the requirements, can have people working under him. And they can do the rounds and do simple stuff like that without his supervision. Uh, as soon as they get really comfortable, which ought to be probably really soon, we'll probably start this rotation. There's really nothing else. As far as the certifications, they've already both been studying. Uh, there are some classes that we're waiting to see if Ver- Vermont Rule Water is gonna have. They've got some online. They're trying to get some in person. We don't know that that's gonna happen. Uh, but we'd like to get them to some of those. Those are free classes, allows them to help them out with the math and some of the operational stuff. Um, wanna get them all that so that whenever they get ready to take the test, they can pass the test. Um, but should be pretty soon, pretty soon. Doesn't take so many, doesn't take like six months or a year or anything. There's none of that requirement. For just the entry level, uh, but you wanna know what you're doing so that you don't look like a fool.
Well, I just asked, I just, the reason I asked is because when we were talking about the truck exchange and you said. That, you know, once they become operators, you know, basically educated operators. Then they can, they'll be using the truck as well. So that's what I was wondering about that timeframe and how.
Right. Once they become, uh, doing, you know, once it, once it's them doing the rounds and, and sort of being on call. My thought was that they would be the ones that would run the truck at that point. You know, we don't want them using their own equipment, so the, the truck would be available so that when they come in on a Saturday. They stop, they pick it up, they do what they have to do, just like Simon's was doing. Um, I would say sooner than later, I haven't talked to John about really how comfortable he is yet with them. Um, but they've been here a month, just about a month, so I can't imagine it being much longer before we start doing that. Where they're, we're doing that for a week.
Cause I think maybe it, there needs to be something, you know, in front of them saying by June one, you are. You know, certified for this or whatever, because when they were hired, that was the intent.
That was the intent, but they can only get certified after they've got, yeah, you're right. And, and they can take the test now. They're ready. They've, they've been. Asking for study materials, but the idea was that I want them to really know what they're doing and not just take a test and pass a test. I'll talk to John and we can figure out, you know, if, if we want the test done sooner than later. They don't have to take a full blown, they can't. Take a full blown operator test at this point. They're gonna take what's called an operator and training test. And that'll get them sort of a, it's kind of like a, like a learner's permit, if you will. Uh, and then they have to have so much window time before they're allowed to take their full blown test. Uh, but I'll talk to John and see if they're ready to, to take that, that operator and training and we'll get them moving.
Okay, cause I remember too, um, first time before they were hired about the CDL as well. And, um, that was kind of like in the works, but not accomplished. So I just don't wanna like bring them on board, say, this is what was required. And once they're onboard, kind of let it lag and just let them go.
Yep, Rob, Rob has a CDL. Nick is, uh, is getting window time so that he can take his test to get a CDL. But Rob already has one.
All right, is there any more questions that anybody has for the water?
Our two existing, uh, road crew, they have the opportunity to be involved in this a little bit too.
In many ways, they were asked if they wanted the positions and they, they declined it. Both of them declined.
Well, I, I understand that, but I mean.
But when we have, yes, when we have a break, it's sort of all hands on deck. So. Like at the last one, um, basically the water guys were sort of doing the water part. They were in the hole, doing the pipe work. And the highway crew were, were getting the materials and they were working on, you know, traffic control and, and all that. So when we have a. An all hands, the idea is that everybody's out there helping out and, and whatever their niche might be. Um, and they've been involved in the past, you know, it's, Paul was out there doing, helping out on this last one. He was helping out on some of the, the stuff in the hole as well. Because he knows that kind of stuff and it, I think it was good for everybody to, to see him doing that as well. But, uh. Yeah, they're, they're definitely given the opportunity to help out. It's not like, oh, we've got guys now, you're not, you're no longer needed. Idea for, at least the idea for me is to get this, get it open, get it fixed and get it shut as quick as we can. And if that means pulling a couple guys or pulling the guys from, from the highway to help out, if they can, that's what we're gonna do. And that's what we've been doing.
So the, the other two can't do these weekend rounds?
Yeah, but they won't do it. They're not trained to do it. They've never done water sewer, like in an operational. They don't know anything about the sewer plant. They don't know anything about the water plant. They, they're highway guys. Um, these, the new guys are being taught how to do the day-to-day operations of the facilities.
But you're doing it. So do you know how to do that stuff?
Yeah, I used to be certified.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's my question. I'm like.
Yeah, no, state of Colorado. I was a water sewer operator in state of Colorado for years.
Okay.
Yeah, and you know, I'm only doing the rounds just to try to take some of the burden off the other three guys and to save a little bit of money. That's it. If it becomes an issue where I can't do it, then, you know, they'll, they'll take up the slack. It is what it is. It's, it's just trying to kind of help it out and give them an extra weekend off.
My question was, uh, are two road guys aren't interested in taking the operator and training test or anything?
Well, Tom, they were, I don't think so. When I asked them if they were interested in either one of the positions that we were offering. They both said, no, it's more, not more money and more responsibility. We're not interested. So that's where we left it. They were given an opportunity to, to move into that position before we even advertised for the jobs.
I understand.
And they weren't interested. If they come to me and say, we'd love to look at doing it and, and I wanna take a test, we'll train them up. That's awesome. I would love that.
Yeah, I'd like to see a rounded crew, you know.
Right, sure. But like I said, when we, when we brought this to them. Uh, the idea was that it's not more money and it's more responsibility and we're not interested.
Any more questions underwater? Is there a motion to go out of water and into sewage commissioners?
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Bless you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any?
No big surprises here, um, just sort of running as normal. Um, I think we kind of touched on this, but we have started running the system. Um, discharging from the system on weekends. Simon quit doing that and, and I think we saw some issues. Uh, we looked back, John and I, and just kind of looked at some of the, the numbers and. It, it just, it just wasn't a great idea. They were doing it so they wouldn't have to come in and do the rounds. That's, that's what they were doing. Um, but we think it's better on the system as a whole to run it on the weekends as well. So. Uh, we have, that's kind of the, the biggest change, if you will. The only real change we've made so far is just to, to run the, the discharge on the weekends. Uh, other than that, uh, there's, there's been no big surprises that we've found so far. The liner and all that is, is holding. Uh, it's winter time now, so, uh, things are pretty slow. Um, the, the critters and stuff, they don't do a whole lot in the winter time. So, uh, again. Uh, the new guys have been out, um, hands-on doing the rounds, trying to get things figured out. And again, once we get them to where they need to be, which should be, I'm hoping real soon, they'll be, they'll be doing their, on their own, doing the rounds on the weekends.
Anybody have questions? Is there a motion to go sewage and back into the regular select board meeting? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so standing committee reports. I'm not sure if, Tom, if you've had any planning commission meetings.
We have not. No, we've canceled the last few.
Um, as far as the recreation committee, the rink, um, we haven't had another meeting, but, um, the rink is opening. Um, we talked about it last time and then it was closed. So because of the governor's order now, they're able to open it and they've been plowing the rink and the parking lot and trying to make ice. When the weather cooperates. Just to proper residence.
Yep.
Excellent. Fortunately, it looks like it's gonna be warm for the next week or so.
Yeah, it's kind of fluctuates up and down, so they had a good base before and then it kind of.
What?
Didn't cooperate. All right, um, no Beaver Pond committee, correct?
No.
You guys don't meet in the winter anyway, do you?
No, we don't.
Okay, we can take that off from now on. Anything else? Anybody else to report on for a committee meeting?
Do, do we need to look at, um, trying to get more participation? Oh, I know we do, but. How, how, um, do you guys feel that we need to do something to try to get more participation in these committees? I know that. You know, we talked about sort of, or at least I talked about trying to. Uh, sort of standardize what E20's committees is supposed to look like was as far as the membership and, and all that. Uh, I know they're all sort of. I don't know, lacking or hurting for participation is. Do you feel that, that you're okay the way it is? Is there something you'd like me to help you out with? Do we? Do we wanna, do we wanna do something about kind of the way things are right now? How do you feel about that as a whole?
Well, I think just in general, um, every time there's a meeting, if there is a committee meeting, and I think COVID's kind of put a damper on a lot of that. As far as like the regional meetings and things, um, but minutes should be posted for each committee meeting. Just so that public has access to those. Um, they were always posted in the past, so I think that's important and, um. I, I think just to clean up the agenda, I mean, if like Beaver Pond isn't meeting until spring, then we'll just leave it off. Um, I don't know if everyone's comfortable. I, we used to reassign, it seems like every March, reassign committees. So if people wanted to switch or get off one and have somebody replace them, we did that and I feel like we kind of haven't. So if, I just don't want people overburden, like if there's some person who's on three committees and somebody who's on one only. You know, how does everybody feel about where they are right now and if they're on which committee?
That sort of goes back to what I was talking about is that we've got, you know, you don't have minutes, you don't have a, you don't have a meeting unless you have a quorum of the active members. Or have the actual members, not active members. And I don't know that we know, do we have established what each committee? How many members that's made up of? Because like I said, according to, to the meeting laws. Because like, like I said, according to, to the meeting laws, that you have to have a quorum of the members, not the active members, and I don't know that any of these committees, other than maybe the rec committee, have had, maybe not even them, have had a quorum of members. And I don't know that we even know what a quorum of members looks like for each committee. That's, that's kind of where I was trying to go with that, and, and I, I think that's why Judy, you're seeing a lack of minutes and things, is because there's no meeting. And they're making decisions and we're making all these calls on things and we're not doing them under a quorum. Um, so they're not really coming.
The rec has, the, the pool and the, and the rink, usually I have a quorum there. Well, what's a quorum for the pool and the rink, how many members does that have, what's a quorum? I would say, uh, from that group, three.
But is that, so we need to follow.
I mean, that's three people making the decisions. Of five, I'm just saying the quorum, so if there's five members and three are there, then they have, we can make a decision. So, on paper, there are five members. Um, yes, it should be.
So that's what we, that's, that's what I'm asking, we need to, what I'd like to do is maybe standardize a little bit and say, okay, these committees are, you know, these committees are meant to be to help out the town, of course, and they come up with recommendations and all this, and it seems like each one sort of lives in its own little nebulous world, and I, I think maybe we have a question.
Oh, Lisa?
So, that was all created when these committees were created, there is a notebook that shows what the makeup of each committee is. There's a paper that you were supposed to sign when you came to the select board and asked to be appointed to the meeting or to the committee, that already all exists.
Well, good. I wasn't aware of that.
Well, so, you know, we'll look for it. Uh, again, it, it's, everything's a living document, so that if we need to make changes, and if you feel like we need to tell you what, I'll see if I can find it and I will give it to you at the next meeting or whenever I can get my hands on it and we'll look through it. Cause I don't have it, you know, in, in all the, the stuff that I found, I haven't been able to find it, but I'll keep looking. Uh, but again, you know, it's, it, it would be nice to have some sort of a, a standardized idea of what, what we're looking at for each one of these, so that it helps us, so we know not only what a quorum is, but we know when we're trying to uh, recruit, excuse me, recruit people, we know what we're looking to find and how many we're looking to find and, and what that looks like, so.
You may be able to find it too, like in March meeting minutes, um, when we had the first meeting after elections and we kind of revamped um, the positions of the chair and we did the committee, you know, transitions and stuff, it might be.
Right, okay, I'll keep looking, I, like I said, I've, I've looked a little bit, just because we've talked about this a little bit before. You know, we've got the meetings of the rules and all that that we do every year, select board, public meeting rules and all that, but um, I, I'll see if I can do a little more research and, and try to find something. Either way, it's, I think it's a, a subject that we probably need to, to go back over, especially with town meeting coming up. Would be good to know sort of what every, what each one of these committees looks like moving forward.
And I would appreciate it, if maybe everybody, and like any committee you're on, maybe share it with them, just, you know, as a group email, definitely to Greg, that you are on this committee, this committee, this committee. Just so we have like a, kind of a, a starting point of, we know that, you know, um, Tom's on the planning commission and he's also on the pond committee, um, you know, Carrie, that you're on the solid waste committee, um, you know. Beaver Pond and our RPC. Right, right, so that would just, just so we know who's on which one, so that we know everything's being covered and that we're all in participation, I would say, so. Okay.
Does that sound good for everybody?
Yeah, it's good.
Okay.
Okay, um, let's see, review bills and sign selectors, everybody look at the invoices here, listing. Have any questions on any of them?
I'll die.
Hey, if there's no questions or concerns, I can come and sign them at some point tomorrow.
Yep.
Okay.
That would be great, thank you.
Right. Um, animal control ordinance, that was included in the packet?
Yeah, so this was just, uh, uh, we're kind of finalizing this, the, uh, the sixty days is up, uh, the ordinance is effective, essentially it's effective on December fourteenth of twenty twenty, we just need to sign it. Um, I know that you've probably made this motion in the past, but I would like for you to just make the motion, if you could, to, with COVID, to allow Judy to sign this, uh, in lieu of everybody else, so that we just have the one signature on there.
Um, I, I'm willing to sign it, I think that everybody should sign it, we have time to come into the office and sign it.
If you all are comfortable with that, that's fine, I'll have it out front and you can each come and sign it.
Cause it just seems to me that, that makes it really I don't want anybody coming back to, this isn't signed, for one, and for two, it, it should be signed, I, in my opinion, by everyone. Everybody okay with that, getting in there to sign it?
Fine with me.
I will have it available.
I don't want to sign this. We had, uh, we had a several minute discussion on leashes. I s, I don't see leashes in there anywhere.
I think there are leashes in there, there's just, um, not a requirement, because it's, uh, I would have to go back and look, but it's not, uh, something we can go measure somebody's leash. How would we enforce that?
The old leash ordinance at a measurement, everything.
I'm pretty sure this one has, um, I would have to find it again, but it is there.
I, I'm, I'm under section three definitions, that's where it used to be.
So, Tom, um, H, running at large means the dog is not one on a leash.
Right, what's a leash?
The definition of a leash at the beginning.
I know, it's at the end, K, leash means an instrument consisting of a rope, leather chain or cord with a fixed clasp on the collar that does not six, exceed eight feet in length.
And that's from the old ordinance.
Good, where did you find that, I didn't see it.
Definitions under K, Tom. Last one, very last one.
Section three.
There's no space between J and K, and that might be why you didn't notice it.
Yes, I see, yes, alright.
Yeah, it was hard to like make that go in there.
That is great, yep, thank you, yep, I have no problem with signing this.
Okay, I will have it available downstairs tomorrow.
Thank you.
I, I just have one quick question back on the bill, sorry, when I see all the listing of invoices, I see Steve Wiatowski is like fifty-five dollars. And then there's an addition, there's one that's separate, like for six hundred eighty. I didn't see it listed in the others, I just was curious.
It, it's, it's not listed in the others because it's, it comes after the fact, it's a, uh, uh, what does she call it, it's an accounting, uh,
Are we ready?
Oh, she's talking to somebody else. Uh, it's like, it's, it's a debit and a credit.
Board meeting.
Somehow, how she's bound, how Celia's balancing it.
On one computer. Can you mute yours? Okay. Sorry, sorry, yes, I'm popping out right now. Okay. So, um, so what's a six hundred eighty dollars for?
I have to look, cause it was, it was dead, so this was something that was done in the past, and so what she did was it has a credit and a debit to it, and she's moving it, it's something probably came from the auditors. They said this is coded in the incorrect place or whatever, so she's making a, a, an adjustment. So I'll have to ask Celia what this is for.
Yeah.
See on there, there's a CR, there's a, there's a code with a credit and a code with a debit, so she's made some adjustment, some change, so what this is.
Alright, I want to know what the six hundred eighty dollars is for.
I'll find out and let you know at the next meeting, or tomorrow.
Snow plowing for us?
What's that?
Does he do any snow plowing for us?
He does, he does, and he does some mowing for us as well, I believe, and that's, that's assuming what this is for, I'll have to just find out, cause again, this is, this is something that's done a little differently than what we've, than what we have, it's a, a credit in one place and a debit in another place, so I'll find out what the original invoice, huh?
What does he plow for us?
Uh, what does he plow for us, um, geez, I don't know, I have to look, I don't remember.
Well, anyway, you'll check in.
Yeah, but I don't know that he, I don't remember seeing any invoices for him for plowing, he mows, you know, the cemetery, he does some trash cleanup, he mows some areas up on Larson.
On Park Street.
Uh, well, Park Street, yeah. I don't, I don't know that he does any snow plowing for us. I've ever coded an invoice for snow plowing.
No.
Cause we have our guys doing everything, and then we have, you know, the, the water and sewer part is done by the water and sewer department. I'll check into it, Tom. Um, and then Judy, I can find out what this invoice was originally for.
Yeah.
I guess it's mowing of something, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Rutland County Sheriff's report, anybody have any comments or questions on that? No.
Didn't see anything.
Alright. Street sign request, that was from the last meeting.
And that was Carrie, but she's in another meeting, so she had requested um, putting some signs, some additional signs up. One was a no parking sign up here at the, um, for the apartment above the, um,
Yep.
Post office, yeah, right there, she wanted some no parking signs on the side of the road. Uh, she also wanted, let me see if I can find my notes, um.
It was something for the pond.
Yes, it was a sign saying that we're not plowing in the winter time.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, um, again, that's, that's something else that we would have to, you know, that if you guys are okay with that, we'll do that, um, I didn't really know that there was, uh, you know, a huge need for it, but if it's something that you all are comfortable with and feel like it needs to happen, we can make that happen.
I think more concerned about the no parking versus the plowing, cause I would hope people would realize it's not plow, you know, we're not responsible to plow, it's not really accessible.
Yeah, I, I think it's just a confusion, she was worried about, hey, you know, what's gonna happen is because it's open year round now, somebody's gonna get up in there and get stuck and feel that we have to pull them out. Uh, I don't think that that's, I mean, if you get stuck, you get stuck, you're on, you're at your own, you know, but uh, and then no parking, you know, I, I don't know, we've got a parking ordinance. Uh, you know, enforcement's always an issue, but we already have a parking ordinance.
Is there any more discussion on that, how does everybody else feel, do you feel the need is there?
Uh, let's wait till the next meeting and Carrie might wanna
Okay.
Come in.
I'm good.
I'll move it.
Okay, we can. Alright, twenty twenty-two budget discussion. So, we had the budget the last time, especially meeting, and then I also asked for the water sewer, which I think everybody got.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, and we haven't got, there wasn't really much change in the regular budget, right, but we didn't get a clean copy of that, right?
There were some minimal changes to it, uh, nothing significant. Uh, I thought, thought maybe the idea was to maybe have more of a prolonged discussion where we go a little bit more in depth into everything, and then I'll provide you with an updated draft with all the changes to it. Cause we made very minimal changes last time.
Right, has everybody looked at the water sewer one or no?
Yeah, well, we've got a lot of time on that one. You know, we don't norm, in the past, I don't believe we've touched on that till, uh, you know, maybe May or so.
So, I did talk with Stan, he happened to be in here and I asked him, cause he said, yeah, I usually just give them kind of a rough draft and then come around May or June is when we, when we do the actual full blown budget, it's, it's a little different. It doesn't go to the voters, it's something that's done by the, you know, by the, the select board, um, so it's in the past, it's usually not quite as high a priority, because there's some extra time there. But I went ahead and put it together, uh, the best I could. You know what? All budgets are sort of cyclical and there's a little bit of seasonality to it, I think the water and sewer budget's a little bit more like that, so it's kind of tougher to get real accurate numbers until closer to the end, but, uh, so a lot of these estimations, or some of these estimations at least, are, are definitely an estimate, because there's not a lot of, of history and expenses, uh, what happened? That are there, sorry, I'm trying to print this too.
I just wanted to see it, because even though, you know, it comes later, it's, it's still part of the whole picture. And a lot of what was in our general fund was moved into this budget here, and I just wanted to kind of be able to compare.
Sure, sure, well, I can go over some of the big, I entered some big red numbers there, let me put some paper in here so I can have this for you guys tomorrow. You know, the, the pieces that are not the pieces that are, are what I would consider more fixed are the important pieces, which is you know, we took the Simon's stuff out of there, so, um, there is a, there is more labor, there's some overtime, there's insurance, retirement, um, workers' comp, all that has been added into this, so um, those are of this entire budget, as, as far as what I would call the most realistic numbers, that top section of, of like six or eight items are probably the most realistic. Those are all based off of the proportions that I had put into our, our, that presentation that I made, which was to have, um, basically John would be like a sixty forty split, where he's doing sixty percent general fund, twenty twenty out of water sewer. Um, it actually turns out to be sixty percent for him and um, out of that twenty percent, it's, it's like thirty-five, but it's, it's still the same thing at the end of the day. Uh, and then we had a, excuse me, a new employee, which is to be funded, uh, his forty hours a week, normal pay is to be funded out of water, out of sewer. And then we had another employee that was going to split time between general fund and water and sewer, and that's what you see here with, with these numbers. Let me see if I have all this together, okay, good, good.
So, um, fifty fifty out of the water sewer, right?
Yeah, no, it, it actually, what we did with Simons is we actually did a sixty forty split, so uh, if you see, we used to pay them a hundred and eleven, six out of sewer and seventy-four, four out of water. And so that's roughly sixty forty split, and, uh, so that's what I actually ended up doing with this, instead of doing a what's that?
With the new employee?
Yeah, so the new employee is paid, is paid sixty forty. So sixty percent out of sewer and forty percent out of water.
Okay.
Uh, the new, the other employee, his fifty percent is split sixty forty. And all the benefits and everything are split sixty forty, as well as the addition of, um, some of John's time is split sixty forty as well.
Okay, so the other, I'm just trying to follow up, so the other employee, the third one, is sixty percent general fund, forty percent water?
Fifty percent general fund and fifty percent water and sewer. So, and then of his fif, of his fifty percent, it's split up sixty forty between sewer and water. You guys love budget, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah. The reason why I'm trying to do this is because I want it to be apples to apples, and we, we paid and we utilized Simon sixty forty water to, or sewer to water. So, so there's, at some point, there was established that there's a larger need in the sewer department, I'm guessing. So I'm trying to keep that, so that the rates are not spiking too much, trying to keep that same equation sixty forty between the two departments. In the long, giant scheme of things, it's still coming, the proportions that were put into the uh, proposal that I gave you are the same, it just gets broken up within the two water sewer. You guys look like your eyes are spinning already, we just started.
Now, I, I get it. Is there any questions anybody has or anything that kind of jumped out at you?
Was the P under now? I missed it.
What's that?
Which cup was the P under there?
Well, you're also seeing a bit of a savings, because in the proposal, if you remember, I had their benefits pegged out at family plans for everybody, and we ended up having single plans for both of them, which is a, a savings of about twelve thousand dollars, it was a lot of money. Yeah, which is great, hire single guys, I guess, huh? But, uh, so that's some of the savings you're seeing as well.
Good, good, no, we, we, we know what you're saying, you know, with the percentages.
Yeah, I'm just trying to keep it sort of the same way that it was in the past, so that it's not, so that it's a, it's a reduction that's, that's sort of the same on both sides.
Is the overtime calculated on that, um, one weekend off, one weekend on and all that, to get out actually hour by hour to
Yeah, that was originally, let me look at my proposal, but originally I had, uh, the overtime assumed at six thousand dollars. And, uh, that was assuming a rotation of three, not four. So there's a little bit extra there. And again, that's, that's sort of a number that was thrown out, it's not gonna be specifically six thousand, that's, you know, it could be You know, it could be that depending on what their hourly rate is, it might be a little bit around there, but that's the number that was the most to me made the most sense. Uh but again, that was based off of a rotation of three people and not me jumping in on that fourth week.
It'll be a couple of years before we could narrow that down, I would assume.
Probably so, yeah.
That just seems like a lot of overtime, twelve thousand dollars.
Well, that's part of that is also to allow for when we have water main breaks and things like that. So we have our personnel policy says that anything over eight hours in a day is overtime. So if we have water breaks and they happen to have, you know, happen at night and whenever, that's what that extra padding sort of is there for. We also budgeted uh in our last budget, when we did Simons, they were budgeted for six thousand dollars overtime, I believe as well. Um. So if you go down, let's see, where did I see that six thousand dollars? They had four thousand dollars in one of them and they had. Two thousand any other. So there's the six thousand dollars. So I think you got me. I think I probably doubled that up and we can basically reduce that to three and three. Because I had six thousand for Simons, but that was combined. So I made a mistake. That could actually be reduced down to six total. And so that changes that overtime from six to three and three. Because if we do, let me grab my calculator here. If we do fifty-two weeks divided by, let's say, we're going to say four people this time. Fifty-two. That's thirteen weeks at two days. That's twenty-six days, thirteen weekends. No, alright. Yeah, that's right. So twenty-six days. And these guys, if they make time and a half, it's going to be roughly. Seventeen and eight, twenty-six, twenty-seven dollars an hour. So that's about seven hundred dollars. And then we have. At two hours a day and that's four hours a day. So it's times two. So thirteen, fourteen hundred dollars in just the the rounds part of that. If I'm doing the additional weekend. Um if if it's somebody else doing it and we're, again, the original calculation was done off of three people, but. Um if I'm doing it, we're looking at about fourteen hundred dollars a year in just the rounds. If nothing happens during that weekend. And then the balance of that is whatever we would pay them to do. Water main breaks and sewer breaks or whatever, whatever happens, basically. Uh and again, that number is is has been duplicated, which is an error. Uh that would be reduced down to three thousand. And it'll be uh I left that without the ratio, so three thousand. That reduces the bottom line by three grand on both budgets.
Okay.
So forty-seven to sixty-seven. And thirty-four, seven oh four. So, good catch.
Anybody else have? Oh, Lisa?
Is was there a list of um streets to be paved for the highway department? Historically, that's provided during budget time.
Well, we have a list of streets to be paved, but I mean, that's that's something that's a living thing. My intent was to. Come springtime, I was going to do a an actual roadway analysis. It's a. It's a scoring matrix that you go out and you basically as soon as the the roads are drivable, you go out and you look and see. Based off of like six different scoring things. Um what the condition of the roads are, you score those and then that basically spits out sort of what your your list of roads looks like. Um I can give a list of roads. I don't know that that list of roads has really changed. Uh I know I haven't changed it and but you know, John may have something else to say about it, but the idea was to actually go out and do. A real full blown uh analysis of the roads. It's it's something I've used in the past. It's it's a. Uh it's used by America Standard of Testing Materials. It's a it's an organ national organization, whatever. Um and it gives you more of a a an actual. Scoring as 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 far as when you're looking at budget and looking at how you're going to prioritize things. It gives you a score of that road, which is a condition of the road as well as. Based up of that score, what the likelihood or the or the the lifespan is left in that road. So. You might say, well, we're going to do a, you know, a really bad road and then we're also going to do one that's going to prolong the life of that road. Um. If we want to list, if you all want a list for budget purposes so that we kind of have an idea of what we're looking at for paving, I could provide that. Um. The paving that I proposed was I, in my opinion, fairly low. I believe it was about sixty thousand dollars. Um so you know, of that list of roads, it's not going to be a a large number of those roads by any means. But if the select board would like me to, I can definitely get you a a list of an updated list of of proposals for those to be paved.
Well, I would think that we've had that list because normally what I've dealt with is a list of roads that are priority and each year you may add to it if something else comes up because. What what I'm dealing with mostly is the people who come back to you from the community and say, our road needs, you know, repairs. And you could say, well, it's not. Budget for two more years, you know, or whatever. So um I think it's it's consistent to have that list carry over from year to year. Unless something major happens where some road is torn up and you have to fix it. But usually you kind of stick to that guidelines of what roads. Our top priority and go work your way down and then add to it year after year, just so that people are aware of where their street or the main roads are going to be, you know, paved.
Right. Yeah, that's a five year capital improvement plan, five to ten year capital improvement plan that I'm putting together. Yeah. Uh but we have the list and I can update the list that we have. I'll I'll talk to John and see if there's any, you know, any changes that need to happen. Uh and get you the list. Um what I was proposing is just. I don't know how that list came to be. Um I like to use, you know, engineering rules and and things that are. Justifiable and I can say we're doing this road and not your road because of this. Um. You know, that that's what the idea in spring was to do is to something a little bit more robust. Um but in the meantime, I'll I'll get with John and we'll update the list that we have and and provide it to you.
So i- is there anything else on the water and sewer budget that anybody wanted to talk about? Or do you want to? I mean, what's everyone's thought about just um next week, having a special meeting to get this budget done?
Yes, I agree. Our our general fund, I mean, I I I'm happy with it. I don't know about anybody else, but.
I think it works good.
You know, our water and sewer is what it is.
So maybe just do those updates and shoot it all to us so that we have one more glance at it. And then we have a special meeting just to kind of go over it and finalize it.
Sure, yes. So what you'll see is the updates will be, I got, we have Andrew Casell waiting. Um but what you'll see in the update is the the spreadsheet will have a green box and that will be the the changed amount. So you'll know that's the one we talked about and made a change to. It'll be green. Yeah.
So you should be hearing from the Rotten County Solid Waste District tomorrow. We're just finishing up right now. It's just a public hearing.
Cool.
And we should be, we were done. So you should have that for that budget.
Budget, perfect.
Okay.
Um.
Andrew, did you have anything you wanted to add to the meeting or you have a question?
Oh, no, I just wanted to listen a little bit and get caught up.
Okay.
So so special meeting uh next week, five thirty?
Yeah, let me um.
On Monday?
Yeah, Carrie.
Is that good for everybody? Five thirty Monday?
That would be the fourth, okay. Fine with me.
Okay.
Keep it short, sweetie.
Good.
Yes.
Budget only, yes.
That budget with a fine tooth comb. Okay. Alright, be a new year. Okay, alright, is there anything else anybody has?
I'm sorry, go ahead, man.
No, I was just shuffling papers.
Uh we had the uh what's the right name for him here? The uh fund balances uh. It's a reserve funds.
Yeah, so there were some you would ask to have, I just threw that in there, you asked to have the fund balances whenever we started reviewing the budget, so I I put that in there for you.
Our salt shed, do we have a fund for that?
Now there's an operation.
It's almost empty.
Yes, I mean, we we have, our salt shed is new, but it's still gonna, I'd like to see a little money. For maintenance uh a few years.
I think there, let me get there real quick. Um.
Everything else looks reasonable.
Let me see if I can find it.
Should have some reserve in case something. Comes up.
I'm going the wrong way. So we have building, so under the um the highway department. Which is what I would call that, a highway department asset. Um. We could, we could put some money into the. Well, we could start its own line item, whatever that would, we have salt shed, that's just a lease. Okay, so that's finished. Yeah, uh we've got for maintenance, building fixtures and and repairs, we've got three thousand dollars in there.
So Greg, isn't there a reserve fund for the salt shed? It's got a dollar forty-two in it?
Yeah, there is a reserve, yes.
That was for the construction.
Yes.
Yeah.
That makes sense, yes. Um. I don't, we'd have to look, we'd have to look at the language. Um whenever we created that, if you're proposing to put some money aside. Into that fund for maintenance, I'd have to just look at the language and see if it allows for that. Otherwise, we could put money, um you know, just in the operational budget. Uh create a new line item in the operational budget and add some money for for annual maintenance on the.
Why don't we, why don't we talk about this at the budget next week and give us a week to think about it? Is that all right with everybody?
Fine with me.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll go to the next one.
Judy, I think Lisa has a question.
Lisa?
I have a question about the fund balances. The fund balance for Evelyn Peterson only shows the money market. It does not show. The actual investments. And on the town hall building fund, is that fifty thousand dollars? I thought that was part of the. Update to the building. Are those fu- those funds just haven't been transferred out yet?
Right, exactly. The other one, I'll check, I'll check with Celia on the other, uh but the other one, yeah, the balance is there because those funds haven't been transferred out.
So are there still outstanding bills for the town office or we paid that out of the general fund?
Uh there's still, I think, a a small bill left. I'd have to check and see exactly where we're at. Um because they they finalized when I was gone. Um.
There must be some billing left.
Yeah, I think there's a little bit left in there and then we we balance after that. Um because I did pay an invoice, but I think it was like ninety. Ninety-five percent completion. So I think we're still waiting for a final hundred percent completion invoice.
So that town hall building uh dollar amount will be less.
Yeah, that'll all be. So we have all the expenses is in a line item. And so we will then basically balance that out with the expenditures coming from wherever item, whatever, what other item, what. Whatever items they need to come from. And that will then be liquidated essentially or or reduced.
Yep. As we had that new hot water heater, has that been put in?
Yeah, that's all in there. I believe that was in the last invoice. The only the only invoice that could be remaining would be like a five percent uh remaining.
Contingency.
And I, yeah, and I I think we're, if we're we're either there or we're real close to a hundred percent. So uh again. Once we get to where everything's paid out and we're we're totally complete. Then, you know, we'll have that expense item shown on there and we will then start pulling those funds out.
So also, it's been six months since Edward Jones has provided um common spoke. Historically, that's what happens. With the Evelyn Peterson Fund. Um if you look back in your minutes, you have surpassed that time. Um whether if there are bonds to roll over, if that money sets in the money market, or if you create. Um and not a bond, I'm sorry, a CD. So it seems that it would be appropriate at this time to invite them to come. Um particularly since you're during budget season.
Alright, I'll uh, yeah, we'll check on it. What was the name of that organization again?
Edward Jones.
Okay. Okay.
Does anybody else have anything to add? No? Alright, so we're set for Monday, five thirty. Special board. The budget only. Alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.